Welcome, everyone. I call the January 16th regular City Council meeting to order. This evening, a special council meeting was held to hear presentations by applicants to fill the current council vacancy. We started at 5:00 and we just completed that meeting. Due to this earlier meeting, our regular meeting is starting an hour later than usual this evening. On the agenda, the Transportation Benefit District bill has been moved to the first order of business to allow the public hearing to be conducted before the hour is too late. Public comments on other topics can be made after the public hearing and deliberation on Agenda Bill 7250. Because of the lateness and number of those in attendance, I will be limiting all public comments this evening to three minutes during audience comments. I recognize that we have a really large crowd tonight, and it seems like many of you have come to talk about a single issue, a single topic. What I would ask when we get to audience comments is that if there are those that want to present on behalf of the group to come up, and also after that, if you have additional new information that supports your reason, the group's reason for coming tonight, please also come up to the microphone and add that additional information for us. While you are in the audience this evening and hearing different audience comments, if you hear at the end of a speaker, if you are compelled to show your support for the message that they're presenting, the information they're presenting, it's very helpful for council for you to raise your hand at the end of the speaker so that they can get an idea of how many people came for that particular topic. So if you could help us out with that tonight, that would be great. I'd like to ask those who'd like to join the council, myself, in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda this evening is AB 7250, Transportation Benefit District. At the December 18th council meeting, council directed the scheduling of the public hearing and the preparation of an ordinance to establish the TBD. Before I open the public hearing, I'd like to invite attorney, I've got Alice here, is that correct?
Yeah.
Alice?
Alice Ostick.
Ostick, from our bond council, to provide a presentation. Thank you, Alice.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name's Alice Ostick. I'm with Stradling. I've been the city's bond council for about 15 years, give or take a few. I was asked here tonight to come back and sort of revisit, I was with you back in July and gave kind of a more general presentation about transportation benefit districts. I understand that many of you have been studying this quite in depth since then and have had a number back and forth with staff and with the city attorney about this topic. So I will give you kind of the overview and review and provide some context for what the transportation benefit district is and what it can do, and then I'll answer any questions that you have. All right, so the formation of a transportation benefit district allows the city to form a quasi municipal corporation that is a separate, independent taxing district, which has certain specific authorities, and it is funded specifically, or it is created specifically to provide additional funding for transportation improvements within its boundaries. The transportation improvements that can be funded must be in the city transportation plan. They can include state highways and local and regional streets as well, and it may include the operation, preservation, and maintenance of these facilities, and that's the basic kind of legal overview. I did mention that it is a separate, independent, quasi municipal corporation. However, the city council acts as the board of directors of that entity. The formation steps, which we are in the midst of tonight, involve providing notice to the public, which was published in December, having a public hearing, which is teed up for this evening, at the public hearing, hearing all of the feedback that is available from folks who do want to participate. Following that, if the city council finds it to be in the public interest, you may adopt the ordinance that's before you, which establishes the boundaries, which in this case would be coterminous with those of the city, and so you're not proposing anything that's larger or smaller, it would simply be the city, and specifying the transportation improvements to be funded. In this case, and the notice and the ordinance are consistent on this, again, the boundaries would be coterminous with the boundaries of the city, governance would be the members of the city council sitting as the board. The improvements to be funded, there's a missing bullet point here, which is that it's the transportation improvement plan that the city has previously approved, but including what's up there, preservation, maintenance, and operations, which is sort of a specific highlight in there. And then funding sources, in the ordinance, it allows the vehicle license fee, it also allows for the other taxes, fees, and tolls that are permitted by statute, which could be imposed at a later date. The vehicle license fee is the only one by statute that the board is allowed to simply go ahead and impose should it choose to do so once it's constituted. That's a maximum of $20, and then after two years, you do have the opportunity to increase that under the state law. In terms of other funding sources, the sales taxes available, it requires a simple majority public voter approval, and then there are other possibilities of city road tolls, again, requiring majority voter approval, or property taxes, which would require super majority voter approval. In terms of voter approval, you would have to come back to the voters with a proposition that would describe the transportation improvements specifically to be funded by those resources, and describe what those taxes, fees, or tolls would be. And then finally, I don't know how much this has been discussed in your deliberations, but recently, the legislature authorized cities to simply assume the operations of their transportation benefit districts once they have been formed, and we've seen since this statute was enacted, many cities doing that, taking over for those transportation benefit districts so that you avoid having that duplicative sort of level of governance, and so you kind of do away with the district in form and take on the powers within the city. And so that requires a separate ordinance that would happen somewhere down the road, but that is also available to the city should you choose to go down that road. So that's the very brief summary, but I'm happy to answer questions folks have or provide any other context that's necessary.
Thank you, Alice. Paul, council member Winterstein?
Alice, could you go to page, slide four of your presentation? Your third bullet says improvements funded. You just did mention something about this.
Right.
It does, in quote, it says preservation, maintenance, and operations, and in the proposed code language, that is repeated a number of times, preserve, maintain, and operate. It's, when I look closely at that proposed language, it's in 1207040 and 1207030, it never says, it never really says construct, build, it always talks about preserve, maintain, operate.
Right. If you look at the notice and also throughout the ordinance, it also does talk about the projects that are included in the transportation improvement plan, which also include many construction projects.
So just by the nature of those projects being ones that might be creating something new, that is, even though we use these words only in the code, that would, by implication, that's allowed?
I believe the reference there is to the entire transportation improvement plan.
Okay. The second question I had was simply, does, it does talk about streets, city streets, and can that, does that extend to non-motorized corridors as well, is it just motorized streets? And does it go as far as the other related improvements such as sidewalk and other improvements?
So the transportation benefit district itself really can include, really can include those kinds of improvements that are within your transportation improvement plan, it's not restricted to motorized types of transportation?
Okay, because the proposed code does say city streets, so I think if we would maybe want to clean something up if we wanted to consider that, I don't know if that's possible, but I think the TIP does include both motorized and non-motorized components, so city streets seems to be a little bit in conflict with that potentially. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Winterstein. Council member Goodman?
Follow up to Paul's question, and I'm not sure I heard correctly, but, so I'll ask it a little broader and a little different way. So this is, there refers, several references to RCWs up there. So is our code, are we, since we're following the statutes, would it be expected, is our code expected to track those statutes? So there wouldn't be anything different, so whatever the statutes allow, our code would allow. We're not doing anything different, or have we changed a little bit?
Well, the statute is drafted more broadly, and I'll turn to the city attorney as well if he has any thoughts on this question, but the statute is drafted broadly to permit transportation benefits districts to, you know, fund any number of kinds of transportation improvements and sort of adopts by reference regional plans, and so any transportation improvement that is within a regional plan approved by the city is technically eligible under the statute. Now, if your code has something narrower or whatever your code references, so what's in this would control as long as it's within that broader context.
Jim, I think what I'm getting at is Paul referenced street, so would street, if you're building a street, could you also include building sidewalks within that?
Trails.
Yeah, or trails, and I would think that if you're building one of these projects, that street would encompass what we typically call as a complete street, but I'll...
The actual proposed ordinance states that the board has all of the powers which are granted by the statute, so it broadly gives the board those powers. It provides that the funds generated by the transportation benefit district shall be used for transportation improvements that meet the requirements of the statute. So yes, I believe they would have, the transportation benefit district would have the authority to include sidewalks and other improvements, assuming that those are authorized by the statute, which they are. They'd have to be in the city's plan and transportation plan, but yes.
Thanks. Any other questions? Council member Ray?
So just, just a clarification, so we can establish the transportation benefit district and not impose any new vehicle taxes at the time of creation?
That's correct. That's a decision that would be made, it's a two-step process, formation first, and then coming back once you constitute yourselves as the governing board of this new entity, then you get to make that decision later about what, if any, taxes, fees, charges, or tolls you may want to impose.
Any more questions? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. The public hearing for the transportation benefit agenda bill, the comments we're accepting now are to, just to that particular bill. Citizen comments are an important part of our process, and what I'd like to make sure everybody who wants to comment on this agenda bill knows to come up to the lectern, state your name and address. If we put the public comment instructions up on the overhead for those who haven't participated before, and do we have a sign up list? Oh, sorry, opening the hearing at 8:14, and has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Lindsay Walsh.
I made it through the crowds. Lindsay Walsh, 1769 28th Avenue Northeast, up in the Highlands. I'm really pleased to see that we're looking at TBDs as an option. I think I had earlier said, hey, we're not ready for that. I was thinking the decision related to the car tabs. I think it's fine to create the transportation benefit district. We're going to have to have a robust community conversation about funding. I think, looking at the information in some of the packet that you guys had received, I noticed that there was a lot of references to the CIP. There's several options on there that are related to parks. I would assume that's not included, but we were talking about the transportation plan, and the CIP was listed in there, so I was a little bit confused on that. And then beyond that, there was something, I have to get to page 36. Of course, it's not going to show up in there. I think it's just really important to think about the larger scope of this. If we're looking at the $20 car tabs, that's only going to give us an estimated $450,000 compared to the sales tax, and so it's really, it's a small portion, it's a portion that we need in order to for, to spend on our transportation stuff, but I don't want to put, make the suggestion that that's going to make all of the issues go away, so, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Has anyone else signed up? Is there, oh, hi, Vicki, come on up. If you have comments that you'd like to present, if you could queue up over here, because I think we have a lot of people who are here to talk about some other subjects as well. Thanks, Vicki.
Hello, my name is Vicki Hunt. I live at 925 Highwood Drive Southwest on Squawk Mountain, and I'm also a member of the Planning Policy Commission, but speaking as an individual. I was really glad to hear the clarifications regarding that the transportation benefit district could cover non-motorized walkways and roads, because I think as we become more dense as a city, we want to make sure that people are able to get around using transportation other than single occupancy cars, and there's a lot in our visions for the city that will involve boners or pedestrian walkways, tree-lined streets, and I think that that is a great clarification to make that this can also be used for non-motorized improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Marina?
Hi, Marina Subaya, 13418, 209th Avenue Southeast, just south of the city limits. Regarding the transportation district, I'd just say that I'd hope that the city, if it is established, I'd hope that the city would work collaboratively with surrounding jurisdictions. I believe Puget Sound Regional Council is designated as a city center or some, I don't have the exact language, but a regional transportation hub, you're a large gateway to I-90, so with potential for, just recognizing that your transportation decisions have regional effects and potentials for tolling your city streets, and like previous decisions with your truck routes have significant effects on neighboring jurisdictions, so I would hope that that is a part of the actions and considerations in all of the establishment and actions that they might take.
Thank you, Marina. Would anybody, come on up to the microphone? Oh, you're agreeing. Thank you, Linda. Anyone else wishing to address the council tonight on this topic? A second time, anyone wishing to address the council on this subject? And a final call. Seeing no other people wanting to comment tonight, we close the public hearing at 8:18, and come back to council for questions. Council member Goodman?
If there are no more questions, I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would move to adopt ordinance number 2823.
Mending the Issaquah Municipal Code to enact a new Chapter 12.70, Issaquah Transportation Benefit District, establishing a transportation benefit district, specifying the boundaries for the transportation benefit district, and specifying the maintenance and preservation of existing transportation improvements.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2823, amending the Issaquah Municipal Code to enact a new Chapter 12.70, Issaquah Transportation Benefit District. It's been moved, oh, the motion, sorry, has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion on this? Council member Martz?
So I would actually like to consider, I would like to move an amendment. So let me explain to you this amendment. So as we have talked about, I have some concerns around whether we're getting into specific remedies before we've had a holistic conversation about the entire package, so I would like to propose the following amendment. So I would like to add, in addition, direct the city administration and the council ad hoc long-term finance committee to propose a comprehensive funding strategy for transportation capital projects for the full city council's consideration by June 2018.
Is there a second? Second. And read your chickens' ground, chair. So amendment has been proposed. It's moved and seconded to add the language, in addition, direct the city administration and the council ad hoc long-term financial committee to propose a comprehensive funding strategy for...
Transportation.
Transportation capital projects for the full...
City councils.
City council consideration by June 2018. Is there any discussion? Council president Martz?
So this, if this amendment is approved, I would be able to support the bill as written. This is a conversation that I've had with the administration about how to, on how to address my fundamental concern, which is around us getting to this, the broad, what the broad package would look like in a timely fashion. I'd be more comfortable enabling this mechanism. I recognize that tonight, we're not deciding on any particular funding dollar amount or anything, but I want to have, I want to make sure that we have a date certain to a conversation about the broader funding strategy, and this would enable that to do so, so I'm hoping you will support this amendment.
Council member Goodman?
So my question is about what, what this amendment and the direction would do, how is this different from what the administration's plan is already? Does, do we have any, maybe that's a question for Emily? And then, and I think, what, if the workload that we have can accommodate that, we as in terms of the administration, city staff, so I want comprehensive packages as well, but since we're not doing any packaging or funding tonight, I don't think there is any proposal to do so, I just want to know what the ramification of the amendment would be.
Sure, I think you're correct in assuming that we were going to have this conversation at the ad hoc committee, along with examining all of our long-term financial sustainability issues. I think in part, the motion gives a deadline for us to have that conversation and then return with some recommendations to the council.
Okay, so it's, it places a deadline on the intention that was already there?
Yes.
Does it change the timeline dramatically?
No.
Council member Batis?
So I would be in support of the amendment. When we have been talking about the transportation benefit district, really, I, to go back to what I've talked about before, I think that this is putting another tool in our tool belt, for lack of a better way to describe that, and a lot of conversation needs to be had around what we would do going forward, but I think that putting a timeline on this and having that strategy come forward together, along with that conversation, makes really good sense.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to comment on this? Council member Winterstein?
Question about the amendment timing. How do you see that interplaying with potential tasks or activities for the TBD? We were, you know, should we form this, then we would, we could identify one, two, three specific projects and say, let's, let's go forward with a plan on how to fund those. Maybe there are unfunded portion right now in our capital improvement plan. How do you see this, this date certain for this more comprehensive question, how it may, are you intending it to affect the actual course of action and the options and the timing of the options for the TBD? Yes, it is. Motion maker?
So I want to make sure it's for me now, for the administration. Well, yeah, I mean, my, my fundamental concern is that, as I've stated before, we have the most regressive tax structure west of the Rocky Mountains. We have more regressive tax structure than Idaho, and sales taxes aren't as bad as head taxes or tabs, but they're, they're at that end of the spectrum, and so I'm hoping that we will develop a comprehensive funding strategy that has both progressive and less progressive elements to it, rather than relying just on the expedient but ultra-regressive form of sales tax. So I'm hoping that, that I don't have to make a big decision on a big funding mechanism that's super regressive before we've had that comprehensive plan in place.
Can I go to council member Ray next, now come back?
I have just really a point of clarification on the amendment, and it seems to, we have more than one purpose than in this, this motion, and so my question is, so if the administration doesn't deliver the comprehensive funding material by the end of June, does that unravel this adoption of this amendment, or of this ordinance? I like both the ideas, I just don't like them together.
Great, so I'm going to call a friend, likely a lawyer friend, to address this one. Thanks, Jim.
If they're made as the same motion, then, if this motion is amended, then you're voting on both issues at once, and if you disagree with one, then that would be a problem for voting on both of them in the same way. You could separate them into two motions, if you wish to do that. The two are related, but not necessarily dependent upon one another, at least. Perhaps from Mr. Martz's standpoint, they are dependent on one another, so...
Well, I'm, I'm fine with separating them into, into two motions, as long as we can address the, the topic of my interest first, because I'm trying to get to yes on the other piece, and I'm not a yes right now, but if we, if I know that by June, we're going to have a comprehensive plan, then I can be yes on the other piece. So I would like to change, I don't know the specific language that I would use to make it into two separate...
So you're causing me a little pain here. So we have a motion on the table that deals with the formation of the TBD.
An amendment.
If we split it into two motions, we cannot vote on your motion first, we have to finish the business at hand, if I'm, so you will not know the answer about the second motion, the one that seems to be more important, until we finish our business on forming the transportation benefit district. Council member Goodman?
I don't know Robert's Rules of Orders very well, but is it possible for the maker of the amendment to withdraw, and then the maker of the original motion to withdraw the original motion, and then go back to making a motion that you made first and make that decision, and then make a motion on the bill? That's, I don't know.
The problem is we have a public hearing.
They'd have to withdraw the first one. Go ahead, Jim.
Well, yes, if you withdrew the amendment, and then if the initial motion was withdrawn as well, so that there is nothing on the table, then you could make them in the order that you wish under Robert's Rules of Order.
So we'll start with the amendment first, council...
I would like to withdraw my amendment.
Second degrees, and who...
I mean...
Goodman? Do you withdraw the original motion?
I will withdraw the main motion to give an opportunity for the discussion.
The second agrees?
Yes.
Thank you. And now, council member Martz would like to put a motion on the table.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to direct the city administrator and the council ad hoc long-term finance committee to propose a comprehensive funding strategy for transportation capital projects for the full city council consideration by June 2018.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to direct the city administration and, direct, yes, direct the city administration and the council ad hoc long-term financial committee to propose a comprehensive funding strategy for transportation capital projects for the full city council consideration by June 2018. Is there any discussion? Council member Ramos?
Yeah, so, so you and I agreed on this last time we were the dissenting votes, and I know what you're trying to do, it's not quite getting there for me. First of all, we talked about regressive taxes and I'm total agreement with, with that part of it, but I do think also that we're just not there yet. I don't think there's been enough public involvement before we go to setting up a taxing district, and that's my big... And that's my big hangup, is we're setting up a taxing district before you've done that, so a little bit of the cart before the horse. I think there needs to be a lot more of public involvement before we take this step, and the timing of something still says, we've taken this step, and that says, we're still going to do that, but it, it doesn't get to anywhere of saying, the public really wants us to set up this transportation district. So I, I understand what you're trying to do, but, but it doesn't quite get me there because I'm, we're about regressive taxes and not enough debate discussion before we start, have the authority to impose taxes, because once you set up that district, the authority is there to impose taxes and do that, so I can't get there yet.
Any other council, councilmember Goodman?
I have a question about, a question before was, does it, does it speed up anything? Does it, does it delay any plans the administration had if we were to establish a TBD, to come forward with earlier projects? Or was the plan to hopefully get a tool in place so that we could use it in the future if it was a decision by the council? Sort of a different question.
Sure. We have not yet discussed timing on bringing forth, you've acted on the capital improvement plan for the year, so that's our short-term focus, is implementing those projects. That long-term discussion about how to fund the overall transportation plan is one that's been ongoing. I think we'd love to try to bring recommendations to you as quickly as possible. We have some projects in, in short-term that still lack some funding, or partially funded projects in our CIP, so that would be the next area of focus for us, would be to fill, provide some opportunities to fund those near-term projects.
Okay. So, does it change anything? And so, respectful of Tola's concern, I, at this point, I would support the amendment.
Councilmember Ray?
I think it, councilmember President Martz's idea or motion to direct the city staff is, is solid. I think it is good business practice. I think it is something we should have before making any decisions about revenue, so I am fully supportive of this motion.
Thank you, councilmember Ray. Any more councilmember comments, discussion? If there is no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to direct city administration and the council's ad hoc long-term financial committee to propose a comprehensive funding strategy for transportation capital projects for the full city council's consideration by June 2018, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes six to... Would someone care to make a motion on the, on the ordinance?
Make it again.
Councilmember Goodman?
I'd move to adopt ordinance number...
Two eight two three.
Amending the Issaquah Municipal Code to enact a new chapter 12.70 Issaquah Transportation Benefit District, establishing a transportation benefit district specifying the boundaries for the transportation benefit district and specifying the maintenance and preservation of existing transportation improvements.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to, the motion to, I'm not going to repeat the motion right now, it's been moved and seconded. Council discussion. Councilmember Goodman?
I support this. You know, we've had two, three at least meetings on this, and I've said several times that I support this because it is, it's, it provides flexibility for the city. There's no funding that would take place now, that, those are for future decisions, but I fully support providing flexibility for our transportation projects for which we do need funding, and we may choose to use this tool later on, but that's a decision to be made in the future.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Winterstein?
I agree with councilmember Goodman, and I'll add that with establishing this special purpose district does add to the options that we can, can consider and potentially propose in a June timeframe. Without it, we would be more limited.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number two eight two three, amending the Issaquah Municipal Code to enact a new chapter 12.70 Issaquah Transportation Benefit District, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Five in favor, and councilmember Ramos opposed. Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is audience comments, and in case folks at home can't see, we have a huge audience tonight. So the rules and guidelines that apply to a public hearing also apply to audience comments. Because of the late start this evening, we're asking each person coming to the microphone to spend no more than three minutes addressing the council, and if you are here speaking on behalf of a group, and there are members in the audience who support what you're saying, please raise your hand at the end of the speaker's time so that the rest of council can understand how many of you are here to support that particular speaker and the topic they're talking about. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Bruce Semple, followed by Ed Hanson and Dave Wagner. If you can, please queue up behind the podium.
Thank you.
My name is Bruce Semple, and I live at 100 Timber Ridge Way Northwest, within the Talis Development. I'm a resident of Issaquah. My comments are primarily about health, which is understandable, given that I'm a retired physician and who's passionate about our Issaquah Alps, in which I regularly hike. There's a substantial amount of ongoing parcel development here, and I have no doubt that the council spends considerable time evaluating, as it must, the many associated engineering aspects for roadways, retaining walls, house sites, and related services. My concern relates to the health aspects of any associated loss of green spaces and forests, and I'm not alone in this. The regional open space strategy for the central Puget Sound region states, "We cannot afford to underestimate the importance of open space in supporting human health," and goes on to say that with, despite 40 years of evidence, "The benefits of health are often not part of the planning efforts." I asked Ken Konig's Mark about this and the substantial and growing literature on the health benefits that open green spaces and forests provide. He responded that, "In addition, there are also other studies that show the enormous value of ecosystem services provided by forests and open spaces, such as clean and accessible drinking water, flood control, and air quality, et cetera," to which I would add landslide avoidance and mitigation of stormwater runoff, which is so necessary for our iconic salmon. After having replaced the open spaces with homes and streets, these ecosystem services functions have to be replaced with human measures, such as water filtration, dikes, and other engineered means. The costs of these are immensely greater and require ongoing operations and maintenance expenditures that never end. I provided a sampling of studies for your reference that describes the substantial benefits of health of open spaces and woodland forests. One of these, from the Department of Environmental Conservation of New York State, lists eight benefits of forests, with the relevant references from the scientific literature, ranging from the boosting of the immune system to lowering blood pressure, reducing stress, et cetera. I would commend the council's perusal of this representative sample from the science literature, and hope that you will be encountered to always incorporate the potential health benefits of green spaces and woodland forests into your future evaluation of proposed developments. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Semple. Forty to 50 people in the audience have raised their hand to show support for the speaker's comments. If you have written copies of your comments, please drop them off with the clerk at the end of your turn at the podium. And the next speaker?
Ed Hanson.
Counsel, I'm Ed Hanson. I reside at Timber Ridge, 100 Timber Ridge Way in Issaquah. I'm president of the resident council there, of about 425 residents, and most recently, you might expect what might be occurring there with people who have acknowledged the fact that the moratorium has gone away, and that several of the agreements surrounding Timber Ridge are no longer in existence, so there's some degree of concern, and I might say anxiety, about what happens now. And I think my comments are basically oriented toward maybe what, what happens now, and maybe hope that maybe you think about some of these things that I mentioned. The population there is very versatile, and there's a wide range of professional backgrounds that we have there, and people there who have lived all over the, the country and various places, so they have a pretty broad spectrum of what, what's happened. And some of the discussions I've had have had to do with their experience with city councils and cities and towns that they lived in, and I'll just share with you a little bit of what, what some of the feedback I got on that. These experiences basically had basically to regard to land entitlements, zoning, building heights, floor area ratios, and road access. They've been remarkably similar, I think, in the people I've talked to. Residents come and, and appeal for fair balance in considering proposals to develop land parcels, which are seen as open space, green belts, unbuildable locations due to terrain contours, the presence of family trails through wooded areas, and I would think roads that are already crowded as well. So people who've come here to live from all over the country see this, and over and over in these cases, as well as what they see here, they've found out that a council can be persuaded that a good chainsaw, a bulldozer, and outstanding retaining wall contractor can make almost any parcel of land buildable. And for that reason, it becomes very, as we know, very attractive to a developer. Likewise, the addition of a stoplight would, would be another way. Well, I remember your former mayor, Fred Butler, who came to Timber Ridge several times, and he would listen to some of our concerns, and he would always nod his head in agreement, and, and would give a very favorable approach. But he always said, and I thought this was very important, and I was glad, "I'm persuaded to agree, but I have to tell you," he would say, "that when I take these issues back to the city council, they often change my mind." And I think that's...
You could wrap it up, Mr. Hanson.
Say again.
If you could wrap it up with a concluding statement, that would be great.
Yes, I, I, I'm finished at the present time. Anyway, I think that's sort of the foundation of our concerns, and we really understand your challenge during this year, and we're grateful, very thankful for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Mr. Wagner?
Good evening, mayor. I'm here as a three-minute reminder, standing back there, buried in the voice of freedom. It's quite warm. It's nice up here, you guys, so come on up. The voice of freedom is extremely important, as we well know in this city, but that voice is paid for by duty, service, and sacrifice. And a reminder that I want to tell you is that tomorrow, Daniel McCartney, our Pierce County Sheriff, will be buried. And his funeral is at my alma mater, PLU, tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. And we don't want to forget those voices of democracy, those voices of freedom, but we surely don't want to forget those people who provide that safety, sacrifice, and service so that we can do this. Tomorrow is a sad day for his family, for his children, but it's one more reminder that we live in a free country because of the brave men and women who serve. Daniel was a six-year Navy veteran who was involved in electronics and supported the Army, the best service there is, and we just don't want to forget that service as well. Not only did he serve his community, but he served his country. Next Wednesday, the 24th, I'm inviting this city, Flint House Funeral Home has asked us if we would, in fact, bury a veteran at Tohoma National Cemetery that has no family. One remaining family member is dying of cancer in a hospital and will not be able to attend. So our VFW post will be there to bury Daniel, sorry, Charles Danielson, on the 24th at 2:00 p.m. If you're, would like to come down, city, it would be wonderful to have you, any of you that can make it, to be there at 2:00, to say farewell to another Air Force veteran who paid that price for freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. A show of hands in the audience. Tisha, do we have anyone else signed up for comments?
We do. We have Tina Conforti, followed by Janet Wall, followed by Jim Lippincott.
Is it possible to add a name to the list?
Absolutely. When we get to the end of the list, I'll, I'll let other people indicate that they'd like to come and speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tina Conforti, and I live at 1220 Oakwood Place Northwest Issaquah. Well, I'm here tonight for the same reason of everyone is here, I believe. Issaquah has a unique historical culture and natural heritage located in the Issaquah Alps. Cougar Mountain Park preserves in part wildlife habitat while offering ample opportunities for recreation. We needed to preserve and stay behind other more than so. Vegetated area of the park away from the site and the suns of nearby urban area. Regularly see at the Cougar, Cougar Mountain, along with wildlife, such as black bear, bobcats, and many birds and other species. We needed to save the importance of the culture and be more responsible to the natural heritage located in the Issaquah Alps. I am a proud resident of Issaquah. I came from the big Alps and I find the little Alps. I, I invite all of you to, to save Cougar Mountains. We need, we need a fresh air. We needed the, to restore the land the way, the way it is for long, for a longer time. So please, save Cougar Mountains.
Thank you, Ms. Conforti. A large raise of hands. Everybody that's here, raise their hand. Ms. Wall?
I'm Janet Wall, and I live in the Overdale Park neighborhood at 22740 Southeast 56th Street. After having read the Geotech report by Riley, I feel that the proposed development of the Bergsma property would be a grave mistake. I have learned a lot about landslides and retaining walls since moving to Issaquah 23 years ago. At the end of my driveway, there is a 40-foot retaining wall put in by the Sumamish Water District to help protect the water tower. That was not the original wall. An earlier wall had collapsed because there was inadequate drainage from behind the wall, and it caused a major landslide which went halfway down the hillside. Fortunately, there weren't any homes directly below when that happened. Years later, a housing development did come in below the water tower, but the drainage they put in was not adequate. Residents complained that their marshy lawns, so, they complained about their marshy lawns, so additional drainage was put in, which deposited stormwater on the steep slope itself. I investigated and found out that the additional drainage was put in without a permit, yet I couldn't get anyone from the city to be concerned about it, until the near collapse of a retaining wall further down the hillside. The residents of Park Hill Apartments were given 15 minutes in the middle of the night to evacuate their apartment building, because the retaining wall above was giving signs of collapsing. The wall had to be replaced and was giving, the wall had to be replaced, and the drainage from the development above was tightlined at their expense. The Geotech report for the Bergsma property indicated that there are layers of sand and gravel above impervious, impervious soil, probably clay, creating perched groundwater in places. When that occurs on a hillside, it can be a recipe for disaster... When that occurs on a hillside, it can be a recipe for disaster, especially when trees are removed and the ground disturbed. Clearing the trees, which soak up water and stabilize the hillside with their roots, exasperates the issue. We've all heard recently what happened in the Santa Barbara area when the tree canopy was destroyed by fire, and lives were lost when the hillsides turned to mud and destroyed the homes below. It was a clear example of how important trees can be in stabilizing a hillside. I don't believe Issaquah at present has the staff expertise to properly evaluate and inspect construction activities on steep slopes to prevent landslides from happening on the site. Look what happened recently at Talis. The Geotech report had numerous cautions about construction activities. One of the things it mentioned that advised proof rolling and-
Janet, if I could get you to conclude, that would be great.
Okay. So I really feel that we should learn something about the history of landslides that we've had in the area, see whether there is other methods of preserving this land using possibly the TDQ, Transfer of Development Rights, or other methods of raising funds to compensate the owners.
Thank you, Janet. All hands up in the air.
Hi, I'm Jim Lippincott, 2258 Newport Way Northwest, part of the Sammamish Point community. Thank you for taking the consideration of our neighborhood to not develop the Bergsma So much Issaquah for me as a fairly recent resident is tied to the visual beauty of the hills around and the hidden development tucked here and tucked there that starts dripping away the hillside so close to the visual corridor that you've taken so much time to preserve. I think this is just, you know, the first straw to ruining Issaquah to what it could be and continue to be. And thank you for considering that. Keep the, keep the trees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All hands up. I appreciate the speakers who have come so far. We've heard about health concerns, drainage concerns, and protection of trees. Is Tina or Tisha, are there others on the list?
There are. Next, we have Janie Swift, following, followed by Francesca Aguilera and Lizette Aguilera.
I can defer to someone else if you'd like. Is that allowed?
Yeah, sure.
We were asking if you could-
Andy Milkowski, part of the Talis Development, 890 Lingering Pine Lane Northwest, and speaking as a resident. I heard earlier during petitions for applying for the council position how awesome your responsibilities are because the decisions you make affect the community, not this year but 20, 30, 40, maybe even 50 years from now. And what I've found is that there's an outspoken community here willing to work to preserve some of this. And some of the most recent ideas were like participating in land conservation advisory groups where King County is working with cities to preserve over 60,000 acres of high conservation value lands, including farmlands, nature's trails. The Bergsma property is arguably considered some of that high-value land. The King County effort also includes potential funding sources which may allow for an equitable distribution. The only negative is, of course, it requires action from the council. It won't happen automatically, and unlike a developer, they don't come calling on a regular basis to do something. The negatives of building the 57 homes have been talked about a number of times, but just quickly, you know, it's misaligned with the planned vision of everything from the Growth Management Act Mountains to Sound Greenways, the King County Lands Conservation Initiatives, you know, just the whole large, clearing large sections of visible growth. And arguably, it's not even in line with the Issaquah Comprehensive Plan for reducing sprawls and protecting the environment and creating pedestrian-friendly communities. Again, arguably, it's not even within Issaquah's own design standards and the green edge of Issaquah. It's already been talked about at least once, the risky development, 50% of the land is high-risk slide potential. We have very adjacent land, immediately adjacent, that has slid before and within eyesight of that has slid and there's been home damage on land very similar to that. Additionally, the amount of development here is just unbelievable in some ways. You're talking about 8,800 truckloads, you know, 10 minutes, 12 hours a day, 120 days. Just think about how much land is getting displaced and the argument that there may not be any slides is almost laughable. Critical areas are being affected. This is 27 acres of wetland, streams, slopes. Two of three streams are being crossed, two of six wetlands are being filled in. All of that's been talked about. As of yesterday, the variances are not listed on the State Environmental Protection Act site. Obviously, decreased the safety of continually interrupting any potential trails or paths or anything with more cars and development and not really aligned with the Issaquah Citizen Survey, again, of loving the environment and complaining about traffic. So that's what the 57 homes buys you. The alternative is a little action on the council side. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andy. All hands in the air. Tisha?
Would Francesca or Lizette like to make comments?
I saw Liz and Francesca leave about five minutes ago.
Okay, thank you. So then next we have Kay Haynes, followed by Susan Neville and Julie Clark.
Kay Haynes, 2830 Northwest Pine Cone Drive, Issaquah. I want to address the Bergsma Windward property and why we think it should be given emergency acquisition funding status. The city has many funding requirements and priorities. We understand that and we respect that. But looking ahead five, 20, 50 years from now, how many of those funding items will seem as important as the loss of our forested hillsides and the prominent scar that's going to be left on Cougar Mountain and the gateway to the Issaquah Alps? We ask you to consider the Bergsma Windward Platte as an emergency acquisition. Is it late in the development process? Yes. Is it going to be costly? Yes. But maybe this is the price we have to pay for having no teeth in our vision. And here's the higher price that we'll pay, a much higher price. In addition to the permanent loss of the current view shed, there will also be a complete clear cutting of 22 acres of tree canopy in a critical area, a 12% access road that gains 350 feet in elevation through the property, over 1,000 feet of retaining walls up to 20 feet in height, and four water retention vaults, 14 acres of site grading through 40% slopes, the removal of 88,000 cubic yards of mountain, two of six wetlands filled in and stream buffers reduced, a major removal of existing forests along Newport Way, homes perched right on the edge of previously heavily wooded slopes, the addition of 100 cars and 543 daily vehicular trips along Newport, a slight to this neighborhood already deluged with the coming 572 units of new housing with over 1,000 additional cars and over 3,500 added daily vehicular trips. This would also be the loss of a truly rare opportunity to connect mass transit to an urban trailhead to Cougar Mountain. Leave your cars in the Highlands or anywhere in the region and take a bus to the trailhead. We are all stewards of the land and environment in Issaquah, but the city council and staff are the leaders of this stewardship. Please consider the Bergsma Windward Platte an emergency as well as a great opportunity for the city. Put together the staff, citizens, elected officials, regional groups, form a reader group, seek out partnerships, explore all the pieces of the financial puzzle together quickly so that this opportunity is not lost. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. All hands raised. Susan?
Hello, Susan Neville. I'm from the Newport Corridor, 2825 Northwest Pine Cone Drive. Hello to City Council and Mayor Pauli. I've been, I'm going to refer to the Bergsma Windward Development as Bergsma, and I've spent the last year trying to figure out how the Bergsma property application for development was even approved. It's been an interesting yet frustrating journey. In my research, I became acquainted with the comprehensive and central Issaquah plans. The city put a huge amount of time and resources into creating these plans which establish the city's future vision and policy direction. But how does the Bergsma proposal line up with these plans? It is my belief they do not. This development is in direct opposition to concentrating density on the valley floor, which is one of the primary issues stated in the comprehensive plan. So how did this happen? During a recent meeting I had with city staff concerning this property, I asked a city planner, how will they ensure Cougar Mountain's tree canopy and tree retention will be in compliance with the comprehensive plan? And I was told by this staff person, he explained that they are bound by the zoning laws and land use codes associated with the property. The zoning laws bind them. The comprehensive plan is only a guide. So going forward, what is the city doing to protect our forested hillsides? Developers will never build to meet a vision. They build to meet required codes and standards, and they build to maximize their profit. When will city council update our land use codes to meet our vision? Until then, it is up to you to protect our forested hillsides and preserve our Issaquah gateway and view shed. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All hands raised. Julie?
I'm also speaking about the Bergsma Windward property, and we've heard about many of the problems with the Bergsma property and some of the frustrations and limitations in trying to work with the city and its codes. I would like to talk about some solutions. My belief is the best use of the 45 acres is for public open space because the Bergsma property is special. This is one of the last parcels of forested Cougar Mountain hillside in Issaquah. Acquiring the property would be consistent with the vision of the comprehensive plan. By the city taking the lead to protect this land, we will keep the northeast corner of Cougar Mountain forested and open to the public. This parcel is just steps away from the Issaquah Transit Center and accessible to many residents. The Bergsma property connects to existing city and county open space, and by acquiring the property and providing the link to the existing open space, it allows for safer activities to those utilizing our trails. So in addition, so the solution is in purchasing the property, and I am bringing forth a few funding options. In addition to applying for numerous grants that are available through King County, the city has excellent credit and could consider selling bonds or using bank credits. Acquiring Bergsma could be, excuse me, acquiring Bergsma should provide the city with TDRs that could help fund the acquisition, but when the city gives out free up zones, the TDRs lose their value. It is our understanding that the city, excuse me, that King County is interested in partnering with the city. Please step up, show initiative, creativity, and a willingness to work with others. Issaquah is not an isolated island. Members of Issaquah and surrounding cities such as Seattle, Bellevue, Sammamish, Snoqualmie Ridge have expressed support. Let's accept their help. It feels like the residents of Issaquah are not being heard, and there is not a serious effort by the city to acquire and protect this area as open space. We want to know, are you doing anything? And if so, what? Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. All hands are raised. Anyone else on the sign-up list, Tisha?
Yes. Next, we have Rachel Affant, followed by Hart Sugarman and Joe Werner.
Good evening, I'm Rachel Affant. My address is 17707 Southeast 60th, Bellevue. I live adjacent to the city of Issaquah and myself and my family spend about 90% of our time in Issaquah, so I often forget that I'm not a resident here. I am a resident of Cougar Mountain, and so I'm speaking as a resident. My first time, do not have polished notes. My nine-year-old actually asked me to come tonight. He looks around almost every day and asks, "Why are they tearing down more trees? Why are we not stopping all the destruction of our forests and of our mountain?" And so I'm really here on his behalf, supporting him completely, to ask you to consider the future generations that will be in Issaquah and our communities and to please do everything within your power to maintain as many green spaces as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Hart? And all hands were raised, just in case there was a doubt.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Hart Sugarman. I live at 2550 Northwest Oak Crest Drive. I've been here for, living here for 21 years. I'd like to talk about the development and construction along Newport Way, which is west of State Road 900. Current construction projects are underway and others are in the pipeline. We don't know yet the impact it'll have on the traffic and the neighboring community. Therefore, please put a hold on any new projects that are in the area, including the Bergsma Windward property. Thank you.
Joe? All hands raised. And Joe's hand is raised, too.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm just going to take a brief moment. Newport Way Northwest is a main east-west thoroughfare into Issaquah and out of Issaquah that is not the I-90 freeway, but parallels a freeway. Should there ever be a slide on Cougar Mountain that comes down across Newport Way, that would be a major impact on the city, not just for the residents who have to figure out how to get out of the Newport Way area, but to our pass-through traffic. And then we'd end up being listened to, watched on world television and news, and that wouldn't be good for us. So I don't begrudge the Bergsma family and the Windward Development Corporation. They took their risk. They were betting on the come, but I'd sure like to see the city and the county step up the pace to acquire the property for the use of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All hands in the air. Tisha?
Yes, the last two commenters who've signed up are Teresa Marks and Steve Pereira.
Hello, my name is Teresa Marks. I live at 250 Third Avenue Northeast. I'm actually an Issaquah city resident, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Eastside Audubon Society. You may not know that we connected, we conducted a survey in the area around the Harvey Manning Park from November of 2015 to September of 2016. We followed 1.5 miles of trail, and we were asked at that time to conduct the survey because of development that was happening on the nearby parcels of land. During this survey, we had experienced team members that noted all were seen or heard as they walked along those trails. They did a total of 10 walks over the 11th month period. Over this period of time, they found 43 species of birds, 15 of which were year-round residents, 14 were migrants, and 14 either visited or flew over the site while they were there. A total of 22 species were seen in the area on just one day in May during the breeding season. Breeding birds were confirmed by presence of breeding pairs, males singing on territory, adults feeding young, active nest and nesting behavior. adults feeding young, active nest and nesting behavior. Breeding birds consisted of both resident and migratory species. Nesting birds used the entire forest area from the ground to the undisturbed to the canopy. Thirteen species were thought to be breeding in the area, and these included the hairy woodpecker, the Pacific slope flycatcher, the backtapped chickadee, the Pacific wren, the chestnut-backed chickadee, the brown creeper, the brown-crowned kinglet, the American robin, the back-footed gray warbler, Wilson's warbler, dark-eyed junkos, and spotted toehies. Migrants found at the site who may have used the area as a stopover include the olive-sided flycatcher, the western wood peewee, the violet-green swallow, the warbling vario, the orange-crowned warbler, and the western tanager, black-headed grosbeak, and the purple finch. Most of these were seen in the spring because migration patterns in the fall require a little bit different route for them in order to find foraging. They also noted that a King County-regulated wildlife species, the bald eagle, was seen flying near the park in both April and July. Due to the difficulty in seeing and hearing birds in the forest, the team that did this survey considered the results of this survey to be an undercount of the numbers of birds in the area. The flora in the area consisted of big-leaf maple, western red cedar, western hemlock, and Douglas fir with native shrubs planted near the landscaping of the park. These surveys were all reported online to eBird, an online database, and we did this survey to hope that this information can assist in future land use decisions, including what will happen to the Burgsma property. As an organization whose mission is to protect, preserve, and enhance natural ecosystems in our communities for the benefits of birds, other wildlife, and people, we support open space, green space, and limited development in natural areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Theresa. All hands raised.
Hi, Steve Perera, down Old Town for about 10 years now. So first of all, thanks to the 13 people who put their, had a name in consideration for the city council. In addition to that, though, there's all kinds of opportunities to volunteer for the city, not just on city council, commissions, boards, committees, coming and speaking your mind before the city council to say, "Know what you think." So this is more of a plug for everybody in the audience. Please get involved with the city. Second topic, on January 10th, I had the opportunity to attend a presentation at the Issaquah Senior Center on a group called Hero House, which is an organization that does community meeting places. There's one here in, there's one in Factoria in Bellevue, and one in Seattle, but it's an international organization where people with diagnosed mental illnesses can come and work on daily maintenance activities, not just to have meals, but to plan the meals, make the meals, hospitality. I think it was a great chance for the city to have an opportunity where people could come and meet and learn about this opportunity, so I wanted to say thanks to the Issaquah Senior Center and for the city for making that opportunity available. Lastly, on saving Cougar Mountain, I support the idea, but I think if there were ever a poster child that says there's a piece of property that we don't want to develop, it would be Burgsma property. So I think we need a firm look at city code enforcement and changes that say, and prevent this from happening, not just having to use the city funds, which are limited for the broader scope. I support the preservation. I just think we need to be thinking five, 10, 30 years down the road in making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. All hands in support. Tisha? Anyone else want to sign up?
No.
Before I ask if there's anyone else that would like to talk, I wanted to thank all those who came tonight and spoke about Save Cougar Mountain. We have heard about health concerns, drainage, preservation of trees, working with land conservation groups cooperatively, that Burgsma proposal's not in line with the comprehensive plan vision and goals, it has impacts to critical areas, a request for emergency city funding, the desire to protect forested hillsides, open space designation being the best and highest use for this property, the enjoyment of future generations, the concern of development impacts on existing neighborhoods, the concern of slides on existing neighborhoods and safety and road closures, and the effects on wildlife. If there is anyone else who has not signed up and would like to add to this list of items that you've presented to council tonight, I see two hands. I'm actually gonna start with Linda, and then I'll get to Marina.
I'm Linda Shepherd at 14985 256th Avenue Southeast Issaquah. I'm in Miramott, so I'm not a resident of Issaquah, but I identify myself with Issaquah. And I spend a lot of my time in Issaquah, both hiking and shopping, so supporting business in Issaquah. The Riley Geotech Report has numerous cautions about construction activities after removing trees. It advised proof-rolling and compacting the soil only during specific soil moisture periods when the soil had a specific plus or minus 2% moisture content. I doubt that the city staff will be able to ensure these conditions were always met under our changeable weather. I'd like to point out that I've lived in Miramott for the past 30 years, and the past several years, three to five years, our weather patterns have changed dramatically, and we've been ha, we used to have mist constantly all through the winter, and we had the rainy season, and then there's August. Now, we have deluges, and we have much more flooding than we used to. So assumptions that we made before about weather patterns are not valid in these times. Do the city staff know how many test borings are needed and where on this property to locate perched water tables and other locations of concern? An original SEPA determination for this property recommended maintaining the forested character of the hillsides, protecting and preserving the existing tree canopy. It has recommended the use of off-site transfer of development rights as a means to achieve that end. We should look into ways of protecting the hillside to reject proposed development is too risky. Oppose the impact of endless 8,800 truckloads of dirt that would have to be carried off, adding to our traffic congestions. You may have seen the signs along May Valley Road that say, "Issaquah, keep your dirt." So it's not making friends in the community. We must finally learn something from the history of landslides in the area, the fall of the water district retaining wall, and the other cases that Janet Wall mentioned in her talk. Let's not underestimate the power of water, the difficulty in evaluating soil structure, and where soil conditions warrant. Some hillsides are better left forested and undisturbed. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. All hands and many, many signs raised.
Marina Subaya, 13418 209th Avenue Southeast, representing dozens of residents along May Valley Road with Issaquah addresses technically south of the city limits. Concern specifically about trucking effects from the potential Burgsma development, in addition to adding support to all the other previous speakers. The decisions by this council to ban trucks from Issaquah city streets last November has had a devastating effect on May Valley Road. We are not in your jurisdiction and the county cite state law for making it difficult for us to restrict traffic on our road. But the proposed Burgsma development has 88,000 cubic yards of dirt to be removed. We would like to ask that a condition be placed on the permit for the permit, I guess, when it's presented to the hearing examiner that specifies that May Valley Road is not a haul route for the development, should it go through. Greg from Windward committed verbally on October 30th that he was plan, or they were planning on using I-90 for some dump site east, but that obviously is meaningless if not in writing or not specified in conditions. So asking that a SEPA condition, council resolution condition to the permit be placed that May Valley Road is not on the haul route, that the haul route uses SR 900 to Interstate 90, that interstates and highways are used as efficiently as possible for removal and bringing in all material to the site. And the, I don't understand how SEPA, I don't, SEPA resolutions can claim that 88,000 cubic yards of dirt can all be mitigated, or that trucking has no environmental impact, but somehow they do. Someone could explain that to me later. But second point being that your current truck ordinance closes most of your city streets to local truck traffic, but I would just consider that a local construction project in your city limits is local traffic, and I would like the city to take responsibility for developments that you approve, that if you are collecting the money and approving developments, that technically all of your roads are on the table for any haul routes needed for those developments, and consider that in your decisions. And in summary, I presented the safety concerns along May Valley Road to the increased truck traffic, thousands of gateway trucks that we saw over the past year. The Maywood Middle School bus was literally inches away from being rear-ended by a fully-loaded tandem dump truck on May 5th, and on July 11th, this semi-truck rolled over on the road, just a few hundred feet from the Liberty High School bus stop, and not on May Valley Road, but I'm sure we're all aware, December 28th, the truck rolled over on State Route 900, and that was a driver admittedly was supposed to stay on the interstate and took SR 900 as a shortcut and was driving too fast, and the road was closed for, I believe, almost eight hours. So thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Marina. Lots of hands, lots of signs. Is there anyone else who would like to provide some comments or additional information on topics we've heard tonight?
Thank you. I'm Bruce Bailey. I live at 2247 Northwest Boulderway Drive in Issaquah. I'm in Tallis. And thank you, Mayor, council members. I think you have a rare opportunity ahead of you right now, and that's to make a difference. What it's going to require is you to step up and make a difference. Right now, you have a vision for Issaquah and a zoning code that don't align, they don't intersect, and that's why these projects keep coming up. Right now, your vision is really written on paper, and it's not really your culture. In order to have a culture, it's got to be a belief, it's got to be followed by behavior, and that produces an effect, and that becomes your culture, and that gets the results we're looking for. Issaquah developed the way it's written on paper. So I pass by a landslide anywhere from two to six times a day. That has a nickname to it. It's called Shower Curtain Hill because it's covered in a shower curtain. So if you want to know how long a landslide takes to resolve, that happened, I was in the council meeting when that was, when that was approved, and the city council said that this is something that's going to be a sound decision, it's got sound engineering. 26 months later, it's still covered by a shower curtain. I urge anybody to go up to that hill and see what it takes to stabilize a hill. The engineering is unbelievable. So please, look at this, partner with King County, and make this an acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of hands. I'll do another call. Is there anyone else who would like to add information this evening?
Elizabeth Maupin. I live at 100 Big Bear Place on Squawk Mountain, and I'd like to speak for the residents who don't have mailing addresses or street addresses on Cougar Mountain. There are people who are living up on that property, who will be forced closer down to the road. They don't have any place else to go. They're not wildlife, but they still need a place to live. I'd also like to address the piece of property called Providence Heights Campus. That's a place that has currently a whole lot of buildings that were designed to provide affordable housing that aren't being used, but could be used if the city had the willingness to save them. We are now back where we were after the hearing examiner made his decision, and the property owner will still fight you, but you have a chance to rethink the city's position. That's a beautiful piece of property. It has woods on it that are holding back water, which, when they're removed, will run down into the residential areas across the road. Some of what they've just said about Cougar Mountain applies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Lots of hands, lots of signs. I see Dave Kapler hanging around in the background.
Thank you. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews. I know nothing, to quote Sergeant Schultz, about all these people out here. So Senior Center is on the agenda tonight. You do have something else to do tonight. And I think you're going in the right direction. The idea of having a nonprofit organization take over the long-term operation of the Senior Center is fine. I know the contract and the visibility of the operation will be completely different than it was in the past, and I think that's a fine course, and carry on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapler. Anyone else? One hand up. Thank you, Linda. So I'm gonna ask for a second time, do we have anyone else desiring to speak this evening? And we do.
Hi, Council. I'm Christopher Fisher. I'm a resident of Shoreline. I'm out here to speak on behalf of anybody who may not have transportation like myself, and those that couldn't be out here tonight to speak in favor of keeping the Burgsma property wild. I come from a rural area before this, and it's very difficult sometimes to deal with the noise and confusion that the city can bring, and I think that it's very important for people to have a space like Cougar Mountain to remain wild and for there to be a place for people to go for a sense of health and well-being, like was talked about earlier. So I'd like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lots of hands up in the air. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? This is a second call for anybody wishing to speak this evening. Seeing none, a third call. I'm going to close audience comments for this evening, but before I do, I would like to thank all of the people who came tonight. I tracked about six different items that were discussed, but by far and away, the Save Cougar Mountain group of speakers had almost 20 people providing comments to council today. I appreciate that. You covered a long and extensive list of issues and concerns, and thank you for bringing that to the council this evening. Thanks to everybody who came in. We are going to move on to the regular business portion of our meeting, so if you're not staying for that exciting and riveting part, I would ask if you could hold your conversations until you get outside so that we can continue with the business meeting. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda this evening is committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Ray.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you. I'll try to make this quick. On the 10th of January, I had my Emergency Management Advisory Council meeting, and we're setting up next week, or next month, I say, on the 14th of February, Valentine's Day, to have a full-day workshop for the council to work on resiliency and preparedness and that coordination across the county. On last Friday, the 12th, I was at the Eastside Transportation Partnership.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yes?
I think the other council members are having hard times, so we'll just take--
Yes, you want to hold off?
We'll take a couple-minute break and let everybody--
Let's do it.
So we'll just recess for a couple minutes till everybody's gone. We're back in session. And Councilmember Ramos, if you want to begin over with your regional committee reports, that would be great.
Thank you. Just quickly again, the emergency management advisory committee is working on setting up a retreat next month. It'll be a full day on February 14th, trying to coordinate it across the county to better yet set things up for our preparedness and resiliency. So, we're going to really get together and spend the day versus, you know, an hour-and-a-half meeting a month. That was last Wednesday was our regular meeting set up for next month. On last Friday, I was at Eastside Transportation Partnership. We had updates on 405. They had some interesting data on how those carpool lanes are working, the double carpool lanes and all that through both, and so forth. Interestingly enough, they seem to be improving the flow that they had predicted, and so it's getting better than it was. And there's been some changes, of course, that has helped out, too. As well as the other item, there was PSRC funding coming up this next year and some of the criteria and stuff they're looking at there. Tomorrow, I will be at the Regional Transit Committee meeting, continue work on development work, and that'll be at King County Council tomorrow at 3:00. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. My first report is about the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. There is an open house or a public engagement opportunity to discuss tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the Train Depot to talk about the possible formation of a destination marketing organization funded by the LTAC funds. The committee is making that recommendation. This is an opportunity to hear more for members of the public, or anybody who's interested, businesses or residents, to learn more about the proposal and to provide feedback and comments. Members of LTAC will be there. Will be a short presentation to do kind of an introduction and a question-and-answer opportunity. And the committee will be collecting comments and the feedback, making adjustments to the plan, meeting again to make adjustments to the plan, and then forwarding that revised plan in lieu of those changes back to Services and Safety for consideration in the February meeting. So, that's tomorrow. That meeting is at 7:00 PM at the Train Depot. That's LTAC. And then, back on January 4th, there was a meeting of the Growth Management Policy Board. And two major issues or items on the agenda. Some of you may be aware of something that PSRC calls Vision 2040, and that is a guiding document about growth and transportation evolution here in the Puget-- four-county, Puget Sound region. That's Sahomas, King Pierce, and Kitsap Counties. We're kicking off a two-plus-year process to update that vision. We're calling it, it's going to be called Vision 2050. And I formally kind of kicked off back in the meeting on the 4th. And the very first item to complete is to actually define the scope of the work to redefine the vision. So, there will be a draft by February 1st. We'll open up a 45-day comment period. And there will be, members of PSRC will be traveling around the region in a number of public engagement opportunities. I don't have the schedule or locations for that now, but they will be publishing that. So, that is actually just to set the scope for this two-year exercise. And then, the other major item for discussion, we continue conversations about the regional centers framework update. And there are a number of probably half a dozen outstanding issues that the GMPB has not come together on yet. And our SCA Caucus did come together on three that were actually then brought up during the regular meeting. And one of them had to do with sub-area planning. We here in Issaquah do have a sub-area plan that covers our regional growth center, but not all do. And so, for us, there isn't as much of a deal here, but all other existing regional centers, the discussion point is whether or not they must complete a sub-area plan by 2020. And so, that has not been voted on, but that is something that we, the SCA Caucus supports, and it's consistent with what we've already done. The other thing has to do is the potential of completing a market study. If by the year 2025, there are certain kind of performance metrics for growth centers, both manufacturing and industrial centers and for regional growth centers, that if yours or any one of them don't meet these performance metrics, we're debating whether or not to require a market study that can actually demonstrate that the growth targets, whether that be in jobs or whether it be in population and/or jobs, is actually viable given the market. So, that is a very contentious issue for GMPB. And what exactly is a market study? They're hoping to finish this up in the February meeting, the next meeting, but I have my doubts about that. And then, the last issue we discussed with the mix of uses, currently, there is no prescription or even target mix of jobs-to-housing ratio. And there's an incredible misbalance in a number of them, especially Seattle, where the jobs are so outweighed the housing that's there. They'll never even get to a 2080 mix. For Issaquah, within our regional center, we have, according to PSRC in our regional center, we're the one that has zero residents in our regional center, and we're 100% jobs. So, I think the direction that this is going to go is it'll be kind of a target mix of 2080, population to jobs. But it will probably not be enforced. It'll just be used as a planning tool, not anything part of the performance measures. So, those are the major issues that we discussed at that last meeting. And our next one is on February, this coming February 1st. I haven't, I have not seen the full agenda for that yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council Land and Shore Committee typically meets the first Thursday of the month. And as I am maybe, probably, likely the chair for the 2018 Land and Shore Committee, I'm helping to organize the meeting. And we are looking at the second Thursday of the month, because there is a conflict with one of the potential members. And so, although I don't have it confirmed, watch the calendar, Land and Shore's next meeting will likely be February 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Batiste?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick announcements. The Eastside Human Services Forum Board meeting will be Thursday, January 18th in Seattle, I'm sorry, in Bellevue. And the King County 2018 Homeless Point-in-Time Count is happening on January 26, 2018, from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And they are looking for volunteers who can get more information on the King County website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council Services and Safety Committee met on Tuesday, January 9th. We looked at Agenda Bill 7522, the Creating Visit Issaquah Organization. As Councilmember Winterstein mentioned, there's going to be community outreach tomorrow night. Then, it's coming back to services in February, and then with an intention to come back to full council on February 19th. Agenda Bill 7295 was a conversation about amendments to IMC 1604 construction codes, a spellbinding conversation necessitated by some state requirements. And the long and the short is it's on tonight's consent agenda, but there is nothing remotely controversial about it. And then, there was a walk-on regarding an Influence the Choice Grant application. And basically, the long and the short of it was that the committee, after some discussion, recommended to come back to the February 5th regular business. So, we didn't take a formal recommendation in committee, but believe it can be addressed generally in regular business on the 5th. And then, Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, January 10th at Redden City Hall. There were no substantive action items discussed. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda this evening is the mayor's report. A special meeting was held earlier this evening at 5:00 PM to interview possible candidates for vacant council position three, and some of them are still here. An executive session was held afterwards to discuss appointments. There will be an executive session held this evening to discuss acquisition of real estate and pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 (1) and 42.30.110 (1) I. These items are expected to take approximately 45 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow an open session. On January 5th, we hosted the 2018 Legislative Breakfast, and we, council and mayor and staff, were met with district legislators about the 2018 legislative priorities. On January 9th, I attended a ribbon-cutting for Bridge Data Solutions. January 11th, I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Resource Committee meeting. Sorry, I was not able to attend the Cascade Water Alliance Resource Committee meeting. They did hold an executive session. Their next meeting is February 8th at 2:00 PM at Cascade's office in Bellevue, and no agenda has been set yet. The next board meeting for Cascade Water Alliance is the annual meeting on February 7th at 3:30 PM in Bellevue. They have not set the agenda yet. On January 11th, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board as a Sound Cities Association alternate. There were a couple of items on there of interest to Issaquah. The board recommended the approval of the Transportation Alternatives Program to the Executive Board. If this is approved by the Executive Board, Issaquah would receive $1.5 million for engineering and design of the bike facilities and sidewalk on the south side of Newport, and the multipurpose trail on the north side of Newport for that section from State Route 900 to Southeast 54th Street. The next meeting of the Transportation Policy Board is February 8th at 9:30 AM. The major topics for that day will be the review of the regional transportation plan and the summary of public comments, as well as discussing, as similar as Councilmember Winterstein said, the Vision 250, there'll be a briefing on the scope. On January 11th, I attended the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce Luncheon and provided some comments on the state of the city. January 11th, I attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting. The fire chief provided a briefing on the following topics. Work of the Joint Ecology Mammoth Plateau Water District, City of Issaquah, and Eastside Fire and Rescue PFAS Study and Investigation. Discussions with Maple Valley Fire for contracted services, and discussions with Fire District 27 for a potential future partnership. The next meeting of Eastside Fire and Rescue Board, Issaquah will be the rotating board member, and will be required to attend, one of the directors will be required to attend the January 24th pre-board meeting at 1:30 PM at headquarters. The next full board meeting is February 8th at 4:00 PM at headquarters, and no agenda has been set yet. On January 12th, I hosted an all-city staff meeting at Pickering Barn and provided some comments on the year ahead and took some questions. And that concludes the mayor's report. Next item of business is the consent calendar. Have the payables and payroll for January 16th been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. I now ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of the accounts, payables, and payroll of January 16th. Items B through D seeks approval of the minutes of the city council regular meetings of December 18th and January 2nd, and the city council's special meeting of January 5th. Item E, AB 7295, amendments to IMC 16.04 construction codes, seeks to adopt ordinance. If adopted, it will be assigned number 2824. Item F, AB 7381 anti-aircraft creek culvert replacement, seeks to approve change order and accept project. Item G, AB 7507, amendments to IMC and Central Issaquah standards regarding inclusionary zoning requirements for Central Issaquah, seeks referral to Council Land and Shore Committee. Item H, AB 7530 Newport Way SR900 to Southeast 54th Street, Design Contract Supplement Number Two, seeks to authorize. This concludes the reading.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as listed, or as described?
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Actually, you didn't give me a chance to ask if anybody wanted to move anything down before it was moved and seconded. Ed's no, great. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? That passes. Next item on the agenda is regular business. And our first item under regular business is AB 7401, Senior Center Long-Term Operations. And this was last in Services and Safety. I'd like to invite our Parks and Recreation Director, Jeff Watling, to provide a brief presentation.
All right. I will emphasize brief. Good evening, Jeff Watling, Parks and Recreation Director. Yeah, this is an item that was before Services and Safety in December. As I stated at that meeting when I introduced this, this agenda bill and the proposed action tonight does not reflect a final decision on long-term operation of the senior center, but rather, it allows us to get some direction as staff to pursue seeking a long-term operating partner. As you know, interim operation of the facility began January of last year. Since that time, it has been the intention, as we move this facility forward into its desired future, that interim operation allows us this time to discuss, explore, determine policy on what we want long-term operation to look like. In March of last year, we began work with an advisory group at the senior center. A tremendous amount of work that was done by that group over five months' time. Their advisory report is in your packet. I've had the chance to go over that a number of times at Services and Safety. The group did a fantastic job of researching, exploring, evaluating, discussing various long-term operating models, and which one we felt made the most sense as a community for the Issaquah Senior Center. In that time and the discussion, I think it also, a very important element was created, and that was the creation of six guiding principles that this group felt strongly, and staff felt strongly, really became the anchors, became the tenants for what we want successful operation of that senior center to be. The group was unanimous in consensus on those guiding principles, where they weren't, and where I think we'll always understand there's going to be differences of opinion is what operating model made the most sense, whether it be direct city operation or seeking an operating partner. What was understood by that group, and what the report really points out, though, is either of those models, that group felt very strongly would be very, very successful in the senior center, as long as those guiding principles were met. I emphasize those guiding principles because as we move forward into this request and into this action, in terms of seeking an operating partner, those guiding principles really become anchors for what requests for qualifications and a request for proposal would look like. They become really anchors for how we measure what a successful partner might look like. So, following that, work of the advisory group, staff, and administration, and the Parks Department met, explored, discussed, recommended action moving forward. That action that's here tonight, like I stated before, is pursuing, seeking an operating partner. What that would mean is putting out a request for qualifications, request for proposal, really a sort of a hybrid of both, in that we will seek to find any interested partners that would like to come alongside and operate with us. Going through that work, this first quarter and second quarter will allow us to determine, ideally in the timeline by June or July, if we have a successful operating partner, and we would certainly update you at that time, and then go into negotiations. It's the recommendation, as you see in the staff report, that we would be pursuing, should we find a successful operating partner, to cement this through a management agreement as opposed to a lease agreement, which was the prior template. We feel a management agreement really gives us the tools and the ability to understand as owners of that public building, we want to partner with a successful operator in moving this forward. Should we, as we go through this process, not find an operating partner that we are interested in, alternatives we see would certainly at that time-- interested in, alternatives we see would certainly, at that time, exploring other alternatives, one of those being city operation. But we felt it was imperative in this recommendation, given the history, that this facility has been operated by a nonprofit partner, given the professional agencies that we see in this area that operate senior centers, that pursuit of this seemed to be a first priority before considering adding this to our spectrum of services that we provide directly. One last item before I open it up for questions, something we discussed at Services and Safety, should we approve this tonight and proceed with this action? We would very much want to stay in communication with our customers, as we've enjoyed establishing some strong relationships with our senior customers. Every Monday morning, we have coffee talks. This would be certainly an opportunity to present what this path forward, what this pursuit of an operating partner would look like. We would also plan on, in probably early February, hosting a Q&amp;A session, either right after lunch, but something that would be a little bit bigger and would certainly make sure you're aware of that, and if you're interested in attending, to come to that as well. So, with that, any questions?
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Council President Mertz.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to direct the administration to initiate a request for qualifications proposal process for an operating partner for the long-term operation of the Issaquah Senior Center, and direct the Finance Director to include $25,000 in a subsequent 2018 budget amendment utilizing general funds for professional services support in completing this work.
Second.
Point of order. Were we going to do questions?
Yeah, we were.
I thought there weren't any.
Yeah, there were. So, if there's no second.
There was.
If there's no second. So, we have a couple of options here, Councilmember Ray. We can either ask the questions once it's been moved and seconded, or I can actually, we can have questions beforehand, whatever your preference is.
I second the motion.
There you go. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to direct the administration to initiate a request for qualifications proposal. Council discussion. Councilmember Ray.
Just a quick question. When do you expect to have the management agreement in place, should you reach an agreement with a qualified partner through the RFP RFQ process?
We would anticipate negotiating that this summer, probably having it in place, bring it before you sometime in the fall. The transition time would be one that would be dependent upon the managing partner, but we would anticipate towards the latter part of 2018, probably having some type of handoff between us and a new operator.
And to follow up on that, do you anticipate that you would have any cost savings associated with transitioning from a city-operated model to a partner-operated model?
Still to be determined, given that we are not in a full city operation right now, Councilmember Ray. We're really in a, and council members have also heard me say this, sort of a two-cylinder, low-budget interim operation. Hard to say, but I wouldn't anticipate it being a significant savings or a significant increase either way.
Great, thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
Previous nonprofit did some of their own fundraising. Are you going to be seeking any type of qualifications or past history for doing development in this RFP process?
Absolutely. Both fund development, yep, and seeking partnerships, both financial and programmatic, would be a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
So, I have a question about the $25,000. Typically, the city administration manages its own process, so is the $25,000 to have an outside organization manage this process, or what's? Tell me how this would be spent.
No, thank you for that question. I'm sorry, I didn't mention it in the staff report. This would be consultant services to assist us, so this wouldn't be an outside group solely managing it. We would still be managing it. This would certainly be under my task, but just given our work plan and given everything on our plate and given the timeline we want to accomplish this work, this would be a consultant that could help us with framing the RFQ, someone with experience in nonprofit senior services. We find that very important.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any discussion? Councilmember Goodman?
Well, I support taking this step, which is the next step, which will have us making decisions based on what we find out. And I'm excited to be at this point and looking forward to the results of this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
I too like this direction that we're going, and I particularly like the idea of bringing in some outside expertise to help frame this, because I don't think we got a lot of shots at this apple, if you will, or bites at this apple, and I just want to make sure that we do take advantage of the situation and that we are thorough and that when we put together our procurement or our qualifications and proposal, that we are considering all of the things that are possible in a partner, so.
Thank you. Did I see your hand go up, Councilmember Batiste?
Yes. So, I just, I know all of the hard work that has gone into putting all of this together, both from staff and the Senior Center Advisory Group, and just a lot of time and effort put into the guiding principles that would guide any kind of an agreement that would go forward. So, I just think it's exciting that we're to this point, and I would be in support of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos?
Yes, I thank you and the whole Parks Department for all the work that's been done, all the seniors that have gathered up in the advisory work. It's great, and I'm really happy to get to this point also, so I want to move right ahead along with this. I do have one concern I just want to mention, and it's not anything on you at all, it's on the budgeting process that I had some concerns with previously, and here we're January 16th, and we're asking for amendments to our budget. And I find that strange, at 16 days into our budget, we're asking to make amendments. So, I just like a little reflection on our budgeting process. We spent three months working really hard on that, and two weeks into it, we need to ask for amendments. So, that's a concern for me on how that went, but I am totally supportive of this process, and the money you need is, as you said, to do it right is very important, and so go forth and do it right.
Council President Mertz, I just wanted to make a comment for Councilmember Ramos, because it's probably something that most of the council's not aware of. By the scheduling of how we approve the process, the actual formation of the 2018 work plan for the year begins after the approval of the budget, and because it happened late in December this year, I believe what's going on is that there are some items that still need to proceed, and so as the work plan gets prioritized about which work in which section, and we review which staff levels we have, that is why it seems like it's coming out of nowhere rather quickly, but that was why the request is coming now, if I'm wrong. Kind of a workload balancing thing, but thank you for bringing that up. Council President Mertz?
I just want to say that I'm really excited that the citizen group had unanimous agreement on the principles, on the six principles, and I'm confident that it's going to help guide our review of proposals that come in and help us make a really smart decision that the community's going to wind up having a lot of support for. You know, it's possible that we won't get unanimity of support when that time comes, but we'll certainly have, we'll certainly have been guided by principles that everybody agreed on, so I'm eager to see the responses that we get going forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of directing the administration to initiate a request for qualifications proposal process for an operating partner for the long-term operation of the Issaquah Senior Center, and directing the Finance Director to include $25,000 in a subsequent 2018 budget amendment utilizing general funds for professional services support in completing this work, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda this evening is AB 7495, franchise agreement with Seattle Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, and this is coming from infrastructure.
Yes, thank you. And I've got a little bit of stuff here to describe to those of you who weren't on infrastructure to give you the background, because we took quite a while to discuss through this. So, basically, this franchise tax agreement from Verizon. Question?
I was just wondering if we have a presentation?
No, this is it.
Actually, we do have a presentation as well.
Well.
Sheldon, I have you. I have our Public Works Engineering Director for a presentation, but he's saying no.
He's saying no, it's me.
He's the chair.
We just typically don't present as councilmembers.
Committee Chair Ramos, proceed.
Okay. So, again, infrastructure, we took a couple of meetings to get through this, and so just give you a little bit of the background as we got through it. If you remember, a while back, there was some attempted legislation at the state level to try to remove local control over franchise agreements on small cells. So, that's a piece of history that happened, didn't get passed, and so now individually, these franchise agreement requests are going to be coming to us. This is the first one with Verizon. And so, we had some concern with that. The original request was for a citywide franchise tax agreement, and the Infrastructure Committee was very concerned with the broad scope of it and not well-enough-defined controls. So, we, so we went back a second time, we looked at this very closely, and the proposal now before you is specifically for one area, the Issaquah Falls City Road and one site on Pine Lake Road. It's for seven sites along there. It's specifically for those seven sites only. It is, there are photo simulations for all those seven sites of what it will look like, because we don't have code written that defines all this yet, so we went with photo simulations to describe what we wanted, and it includes things such as like no ground equipment being there and so forth. So, it's very specific for that area. It's kind of our pilot, if you will. Now, the plan in the future is that they'll be working with Sheldon and Keith on getting code written, so that we will have code in place, so when we do these, that will be there, and it can be well-defined, and we won't have to have all these photo simulations and things of that nature, so we'll simplify that a little bit. And we expect there will be more requests of these coming from other companies, as well as additional requests possibly from this company, because they want more areas of the city to put these small cell sites up on. So, there's probably more coming, we don't know what, but the way things are, these are also time limited. When someone does a request, the city really has about 120 days to react to those. We're already past that a little bit, because of state and committee for a while, so we're actually just past that a little bit. And so, anyway, hopefully, these will come a little bit better with a little more definition as they go, and as I say, we can expect more. And also, just another background piece, I've also heard that there's further attempts at the state level to get some laws passed, again, to limit local control on these things, so we don't know where that'll be in the future, too. I just want to mention that. Another thing mentioned that the committee was concerned about was net neutrality. There wasn't anything done about that, and Paul, if you want to, if I'm done, if you want to add more to that, you can, but a question that if they're doing these things, net neutrality was a concern to us and many folks, but there's nothing right at this level that we thought we could do with that. And so, summing up, if you look at this, it's for seven sites, very controlled, very limited, and very specific, and with photo simulations of what it will look like. Those are in your package, I hope you saw them, so if you have any questions, ask me or Sheldon's there, too, and if Paul, if you want to add anything to, that I may have missed, there was a lot talked about in those two meetings that you want to add, go right ahead.
Yeah, any council member, actually, with questions for Councilmember Ramos as chair or for Sheldon. Paul, did you have something you want to add?
Two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to give the committee report, and I touched upon that, but just as a reminder, yes, we did, we did learn, we had a representative from Ogden Murphy Wallace there who was assisting us with this plan, and did answer the question about whether or not we could, in our own local control, call for enforcement of net neutrality as, through this agreement, and we were told that no, the way that the FCC issued their ruling, not even states have control, and we do know that, we were advised that a number of western states, Washington State as well perhaps, are considering court action to challenge that FCC ruling, so we were advised to just follow that process rather than go out on our own, so that's what we did. We did not ask for any inclusion into the contract.
Thank you. Are there any council member questions?
Okay, shall I make a movement here to adopt ordinance number?
2825.
2825, granting to Seattle SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless, a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications system consisting of small cell facilities in the public rights of way of the city, and prescribing certain rights due to these terms and conditions with respect thereto.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Winterstein?
The language of that motion, I noticed, doesn't refer to the agreement or attachments. I'm just wondering about how tight this really is.
The motion adopts the ordinance, and the ordinance adopts by reference the exhibit that has all of the attachments, so I think it includes everything that you're looking
Is there any additional discussion?
Yeah.
Council President Mertz?
I just want to thank you for all the work in committee. Sounds like you guys spent a lot of time getting it very specific and so that it wouldn't allow best fields of these things all over the city, so thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2825, granting to Seattle SMSA Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications system consisting of small cell facilities in the public rights of way of the city, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda is For Good of the Order. Does anyone have anything for Good of the Order? So, I do. If council members don't, I've had discussions recently with Council President Mertz about some updates that we may provide on a regular basis during For Good of the Order, just sort of to set the stage for what's coming in the next few weeks. Our next council meeting is February 5th, and we have a draft agenda that includes the following items under regular business. Proposed authorization of a grant extension for the Influence of Choice Program, an update on our solid waste contract, proposed adoption of an ordinance amending the collection of delinquent LID assessments, and there will be, likely be, an executive session. This is just a proposed agenda, and it's subject to change over the next few weeks. I also wanted to provide a quick update on the moratorium work items, since we don't necessarily touch on those each council meeting, but I know there are many members of the public and many businesses that are tracking that. One of the work items, which was reviewing the Central Issaquah Plan District Visions, the next touch in public for this will be at the Planning Policy Commission/Task Force meeting. They met last Thursday to discuss the updated visions, and their next meeting is scheduled for January 25th at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. Second work item that is still outstanding for the moratorium is inclusionary zoning. This is covered in Agenda Bill 7505, which was on the consent calendar this evening, is that correct, Tishon? And it is looking to refer it to the February Land and Shore Committee meeting. The agenda bill looks to set the next steps for this continuing discussion on this item. And I did talk earlier about the council vacancy process. At 5:00 p.m. this evening, we did have interviews with 13 candidates seeking to fill the vacant council seat. There is an opportunity for the public to meet the candidates on January 23rd at 5:30 in the Eagle Room across the street, as they meet and mingle with our current six council members, and that was all I had for Good of the Order. Last item on business this evening is executive session. There will be an executive session held this evening to discuss acquisition of real estate and pending potential litigation per RCW 42.30.110 bracket one bracket B and 42.30.110 bracket one bracket I. These items are expected to take approximately 45 minutes. Action is anticipated to follow an open session. We will now recess into executive session at 10:10 p.m. We will now recess into executive session at 10:10 p.m.
We are back in open session at 11:13. Continuing under regular business, is there a motion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the property located at 275 Front Street in the amount of $450,000 plus closing costs. I would like to amend that as I move it to include $45,000 in demolition costs for a grand total of $495,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the property located at 275 Front Street in the amount of $450,000 plus closing costs.
Plus $45,000 in demolition costs.
Plus $45,000 in demolition costs. Did you do for a total?
For a grand total of $495,000 plus closing costs.
A total of $495,000. That's closing costs.
That's closing.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Stacey, Councilmember Goodman has a look on her face.
Um, I just does not, just don't remember us doing the purchase and sale and then it seemed to me that the demolition, what we're going to do with the property would be separate. Great conversation about that. I don't, just feels odd to me.
Have we done it this way before?
Yeah. I don't know that it has to be done this way. If the $45,000 is demolition cost, would that even have to come to the city council since you've got a $45,000 public bidding limit? I'm not sure. Under your purchasing policies. But, you know, the two are really separate issues, but...
I guess...
The answer is I don't know. You've kind of told me before.
Okay.
Not in my camera's view.
Okay. I understand Councilmember Mertz's intention, which is transparency and to be able to let the public know what a total project cost is. Councilmember Winterson, you had a comment?
Yeah, with the demolition, we are presupposing what we're going to do with the land. We hadn't had any conversation. All right. We're presupposing demolition. Am I alone on questioning that?
No, because I questioned it first.
No, thank you. Sorry. I'm with Stacy.
So I, um, I would, no, it's not something that I'm going to, I suppose, kick and scream the loudest of anything I've ever kicked and screamed about. It just seems it would be a separate conversation about specifically what the, when you say to encompass the whole project, I don't think that encompasses the whole project because at some point we'll do something else with that land. And so I don't, I think that that's a misstatement.
President Mertz.
I want to withdraw my motion.
The second degree?
Yes.
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the property located at 275 Front Street in the amount of $450,000 plus closing costs.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the property located at 275 Front Street in the amount of $450,000 plus closing costs. Is there discussion? Or 50 plus closing costs. Is there a discussion?
Ikutola.
Councilmember Ray.
I just think it is really important, given the public comments we heard tonight, that we recognize that entering into this agreement doesn't have any bearing on subsequent land purchases we may or may not make. So I just want to, you know, be real clear that we're not doing this at the exclusion of something else.
Any other comments? Councilmember Ramos.
And then I'd like maybe to state for the record that where the funds are coming from.
That'd be good.
So my understanding is that it's 50% from Park Bond and 50% from King County Conservation Futures. Conservation Futures. So it's only half of that is coming out of a park bond that's connected to the city. The other half's coming from King County.
Good point. Thank you. Any other comments? Any other discussion? All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the property located at 275 Front Street in the amount of $450,000 plus closing costs, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 11:18.